All right. It's 6:00 PM and I will call this meeting to order. We all please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions, here is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all very much. At this time, we will actually go to Kathy Sweeney, who's in for our village administrator, who is ill. I spoke to him on the phone. He doesn't sound very good, so we didn't really want him here anyway. But we will go to the village clerk. Kathy Sweeney, why don't you start with the mayoral appointments, please?
Of course. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Mayoral appointment number one. Whereas Corey Swayze is a heavy equipment operator in the Village of Southampton Highway Department, and whereas Swayze has requested an audit from the Suffolk County Department of Civil Service regarding the duties he is currently performing, and whereas after review of his duties, the Suffolk County Department of Civil Service has reclassified his position to Highway Labor Crew Leader, now therefore be it resolved that Corey Swayze is appointed as Highway Labor Crew Leader in the Highway Department of the Village of Southampton at a salary of $111,875.0 retroactive to December 4th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Mayoral appointment number two. Resolved, Mayor Menger appoints and requests a motion for the Board of Trustees to approve the following member of the appointed Ethics Board. Ethics Board, Roy L. Wines III, with a term expiring June 30th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Now, public hearings. Number one, a proposed special permit for workforce housing development and resort hotel use at 71 Hill Street in the Village of Southampton pursuant to 116-5F of the Village Code of Southampton. So who would like to appear on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening. Thank you very much. It's John Bennett for the applicant. The principals, DeeDee Gotthold, Terry Moan, and Eddie Moan are with us, and John David Rose and Scott Rose are here.
Mr. Bennett, before you go on, I just wanted to note for the record that I did receive the affidavit of mailing, the proof of mailing, and the affidavit of posting granting the board jurisdiction for this hearing, so.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm just going to give a very brief overview and then the architecture and site plan talk about it all. That's where it gets to the heart of it, so I'll have John and Scott present. But this is a continuation of a public hearing requesting an amendment to an April 2021 approval of the trustees, which granted approval to construct a resort hotel with 49 resort hotel units and four workforce housing units. We're now at 40 resort hotel rooms suites, eight workforce housing. So the number of resort hotel units has decreased and the number of workforce housing has increased. We also have staff housing for eight employees. That's four units, two employees per unit, and that was shown, the four units each with two beds, were shown in the EAF and were shown in the typical unit as submitted by John's office. There's also an onsite sewage treatment plant proposed. The buildings, what we call Buildings E and F, those are the two buildings up front. F, which is the east building, will be converted to workforce housing. E is to remain commercial. The clock tower will be removed. And just a couple of things, there was a, as far as I'm concerned, the significant change in why the board wanted to have a hearing, and it's a significant change, not programmatically, but just in terms of the site layout, was that the swimming pool has been moved to an outside, changed to an outside swimming pool at the nordly end of the property. It's merely a 20 by 45 pool, and it decreased the mass and the length of the building, which we think is important, because there's no longer an indoor pool. You remember, there was an indoor pool, and made the building quite a bit longer. Really, what was driving that was an attempt to get to closer compliance with this 90% frontage requirement that's in the Village Business Zoning District for the code. I've made no, I haven't been shy about saying that I don't think that that code makes any sense, other than on Main Street and Jobbs Lane. I don't think it was meant really to apply outside the heart of the Village retail business. We will be going to the zoning board of appeals for relief from what I think is a requirement that shouldn't really apply here, but we'll make that argument, and we're confident about it. But what we have done is make the building itself shorter, it's not as wide, thus increasing what we have to do before the zoning board of appeals. We think net-net, it makes much more sense, and also allowing us to create some more green space. But let me have John and Scott take you through it, and I think that's pretty much all we have to say, unless there are questions, obviously.
Good evening. So I want to talk briefly about where we've been, where we are today. You may recall, our first time in front of the board, we had what we called a grand L. It started here, and it went down this way.
Yeah.
These buildings were to be demolished at the point, and it was a big L shape. And as John pointed out earlier, we were trying to get the 90% to meet the zoning code, and we fact, we did. That building was 581 feet long from here to here. There's openings here and openings here for fire vehicles to get through. That building was 49,500 square feet. It had 21% green space, 49 units, and met the 90% coverage. We then came back, because we listened, that it was on the bigger side, and the driver of 90%, just quite frankly, didn't make sense for the site. These two buildings, E and F, although they're visually not great, they're structurally sound. The building here, dotted here, is the one that we're proposing to remove. So the second plan that we brought you, as John described, had a swimming pool enclosed in between the two, and a building here and a building there. That building was 388 feet long. We reduced it to 40 units, and it was 36,000 square feet, most of the floors. So you can see, in each one, it's getting smaller and smaller. Tonight's design is 284 feet long. So we went from the beginning at 581 down to 284. We're 33,000 square feet. We're still 40 units. We're now covering approximately 50% of the frontage. So that will be the variance that John described earlier, that we don't believe we should have to adhere to, but we'll get there at some point. We're still 40 units, but we're 23% green space. And what's nice about this layout is that, you may recall on some of the others, as the buildings were spread out, there was green space, but it was scattered around. The pool, being enclosed, it just made it longer, but faced with the fact that it was longer. Now, what we've done, we still have great green space here, and we've involved a landscape architect, and we'll get into that at some point at some other meetings, and there's green space here, of course, but now there's a fair amount of green space here concentrated at the end. Lovely trees around the area, this area over here. So we really feel that it is a more compact building. It takes up less of the site. I listened to other people, other board members, saying, you know, it's a little on the large sides. So we looked at it and said, how can we make it still meet the 40 units, but give more greens, more green space? And I think this does it. I'm quite happy that, although it's been a while, that we're here, but I think this is a better building. It's a tighter package. It has less impact. I think it works well. And Scott, if you could help me pull out some of these elevations, so you can get an idea what they look like. Those of you that know our work, I'm a big fan of John Russell Pope, Mackenzie White, and you may know some of the houses we've done in the village that are similar to this, and quite frankly, not that much smaller than this. Two-and-a-half-story building, shingled building. The group, the goal is to make it very low-key, but to get along with things here in the village and make it look like it's always been here. Spin around.
Yeah.
Sorry, you don't get to see it.
No, we see it.
I can see it.
Yeah.
Okay. It needs to get along with the surrounding architecture. Across the street, of course, there's a Gambrel Building. We've done tons of these. It fits. The materials will make sense. It's not going to be a silver, bright white penny. It's going to be materials that patina over time, and it blends in. I can go on and on about the architecture, but that's really not what this is about tonight. Scott, if you have anything you wanted to add?
We have typical floor plans shown here of the various unit types. So some that are ADA compliant, some that are king rooms, double queen rooms. We have the workforce housing rooms and staff housing rooms.
This is all submitted?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it's all part of the package. But they all, they're under 600 square feet each. The workforce housing, they're approximately 800 square feet each. That hasn't changed since the last iteration. In building F, which is this, yeah, it's...
As I said, we can go into the nuts and bolts of it now, but I think you get the general idea.
Yeah.
And we're here to answer any questions.
So the primary change is that the building got shorter, which we think is a good thing. We have to go to the zoning board of appeals anyway. We think we can make an absolutely perfect case. We hope you'll agree with this. I just don't think that 90% rule really has any real adhesion to this area. And the pool outside, and I think that's a better programmatically, and also it makes the building shorter, it got a tiny, a little bit fatter, but not much. And this is, we're trying to put this directly into some very familiar east-end architectural styles. We hope you'll agree. I think John is very married to some of the classical east-end styles, and I think it shows in this. And I know it's not about architecture tonight, but I think it shows the seriousness and the, what we've gone through to get this thing set up.
Okay. Ed or Len, do you have any questions?
Yes. First of all, positive comments. You've made the building smaller, which is great, but what you also did is use great architecture design to make a large building look less massive. I really like it. I think you did an excellent job in changing the outlook and the design. So we still have a two-and-a-half story, but it's kind of broken up. I really like what you did there. With the outdoor pool, of course, the building is not as massive in length, which is really great, and I like the fact that you also added a sidewalk, a five-foot sidewalk, which we didn't have before. You were right up to the street, so now you have some pedestrian walkway as well. At least, I don't think you had it before.
That was always there. It was the existing one along Brady.
Oh, the original one.
We will have to adjust it and repair it as needed. There is an existing curb cut in the middle of it, near Bi-Hydrant, that we're going to infill, which the village will pick up an additional parking space in theory, as we make, we shift that curb cut from here to the north.
Right.
And the reason this, this building has to come so close to the road is because there's another code section that says it has to be three feet from the right away. So again, those things are really, I think, designed for Jobbs Lane and Lane Street, but they're in the code for the Village business.
Now, my only concern is, again, this is not an application that is as of right. We have to approve it, and I still feel that the village should get something more in return. So I'm still looking for those two additional workforce housings, if it can be maybe placed in the commercial building or somehow in the main building. And I mean, the, right now, you're at 16%. If you add the two units, it'd be 20%. That is 48, eight divided by 48 is 20%. That's the way you have, supposed to work it out. The other option is to keep the eight units, but reduce the main building to 30, to 30, to 30 units, and that, again, you're back, I know you don't want to do that, but that's, again, would be 20%. And considering that, if this was a transient hotel, I think the maximum that is allowed is 24 units. So I'm okay with the design. I'd like to see if you can find those two extra spaces.
Yeah, I just, I, this is, we've been extremely frank. We had an approval for 49 units. We went to 40. We doubled the number of workforce units. We're really, if you want to, we're not willing to do anything more. I just, I might as well be frank with you. We want to be partners with the village on this. We're not going to fight the village on this. We've been very frank throughout, but if there's any higher requirement for what we're providing than what we're providing here, we're simply not interested in going forward with the project. I, I, you might as well lay it right out on the table. I think I've been very, very candid and transparent about that from, from the beginning. You approved a building with 49 units and four workforce units. We came back with 40 less, you know, less resort hotel units and eight workforce units. It'll probably be one of the bigger, I mean, you know, grab the private sector doing affordable workforce housing when you can grab it, because the village hasn't done anything about it. I mean, and, you know, God forbid somebody, some federal judge comes and tells you, that's where you're going to put the affordable housing. One of the things you get to say on a project like this is, we have, through our zoning and our incentives, encouraged it to be provided by the private sector. But that's, I understand, and I understand that's, you see that as your role, and I get it, but we're not interested in doing anything more. We think we've doubled what we had before in approval, and we think that's more than generous. But I, I understand.
Len, do you want to say?
Can you tell us a little bit about the parking spaces and about the cross-access concept?
So we meet all the required parking spaces. The exact number?
I think you have 59.
59, yes.
It didn't change?
Did not change. Because we haven't changed the unit count. We haven't had to.
And I've been very candid as well in saying that I don't think, under the Holmes versus planning board case, that this is an appropriate situation where you could, under the law, require cross-access. I've been very clear, and I've demonstrated in that Holmes case. There's even a site plan. It's the only case I know where there's a, in the New York reports, where there's a site plan, and that was dealing with a strip mall. But we did show cross-access, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask that you, the code allows you, it says, allows you a menu of who can be the approving authority for cross-access, and I would respectfully request that you, in what I hope will be your resolution of approval, you give the planning board that authority. They are the ones who are set up from a statutory way to deal with that. Every single time I've been involved in any sort of cross-access argument in the municipalities on the east end, it's always been handled by the planning board. And I think you should defer to them to see whether or not, in this particular instance, cross-access is appropriate. So I would make that respectful request. You know what? I drove through the CBS parking lot the other day, and what I did is, I didn't drive around the perimeter. I drove through the parking lot, and I say, you guys should try that, because that's what you're essentially asking us to do here. And I also did show you that, that picture-perfect cross-access, which happens on the back of the old, oh, God, I'm really dating myself, another Starlands building, what was it? Pier One?
Le Mans, by the way.
Le Mans. That's the building that's farthest to the, to the east.
John, you're not dating me, that's for sure.
Excuse me?
You're not dating me.
Okay, okay. But anyway, but I just want to finish this. That cross-access makes sense, because you have all these commercial things where people may utilize them all together, but it goes along the spine of the property, so you're not interfering with parking. You don't, you know, people, you know, there'll be people, you know, it's, there's not the synergy that you would have if you had all retail. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I'd just like to ask one, one further thought. If we're not interested in cross-easement, and the movie theater isn't, and I guess we would all agree that if someone were staying here and they wanted to go to the movie, they'd not get in their car and drive to the movie.
Yeah, we can drive.
And if they went to a movie, they'd not get in their car and come to the hotel. So the only reason there's a cross-easement access is so I can get around going through the light.
That's it.
And I will tell you, I'm guilty of doing it many times before the chain was put in there. What other reason would there be that cut? I'm open. Does anybody have a real reason?
I mean, because what happens is...
Other than that?
You're going to have people looking at the light at the intersection of Windmill and Hill, and they're going to see that long line, and they're going to see that, they're going to go past the, I call it the La Caressa Building. Let me hang a right and go up there and get around.
But I've done it many times. Your chief of police has said that they can't control, not you in particular, but it's hard to control people making less when they should, nor right when they should.
All I'm saying right now, I don't want to have that full-blown argument, other than to say what our position is, and I would just ask that you say, in your resolution of approval, you leave that up to the planning board. That's all.
Thank you.
That's all.
All right. Robin or Roy?
Yes. I believe you said that you have additional green space?
Yeah.
Oh, how lovely. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Sure. By converting this to an outdoor pool?
Okay.
We pick up from the grand L, approximately 2% of green space, additional green space for the whole site.
Wonderful.
So we try to get over 20, so we're at 23% green space for the whole site.
Wonderful. Well, I thank you. I think the plans look lovely. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Roy?
Trustee Simeoni discussed the as-of-right potential for this property. As-of-right, you could build retail stores.
Yes.
Which would have no workforce housing at all. Instead, we're going to get eight workforce housing. It would be great to have even more than that, but we're going to get eight. And what was originally approved years ago was, was less than that, and the applicant has increased the number. So, well, I'm definitely in favor of workforce housing. I also respect the applicant's right to use the property to their best interest, and as-of-right, they did not have to provide any workforce housing if they made retail stores out of this property, which would also increase the traffic coming out of the property, because retail stores create more traffic than work, than the hotel will create. So I think that the plan that, that has been presented meets the, meets the requirement of more than 10% workforce housing, it's 16%. And as Trustee Simeoni said, it would be great to have more, but I'm well pleased with the application, and I'm thankful that the applicant has agreed to provide at least eight units. With regard to the cross-access, we're currently struggling on Hill Street with people doing whatever they can to avoid Hill Street and cutting through neighborhoods. In fact, we had a, we'll probably discuss this evening, a serious incident that happened from a cut-through on Somerset just a few days ago. I'm absolutely in agreement with John that the reason people will cut through off of Windmill Lane and go around the movie theater and through is to avoid the light and to try and get a jump on the traffic at Hill Street. And considering that we're already fighting this issue in other areas, and that the steps that we've tried to take to prevent this from happening have proven to be less than successful, I don't see any reason to provide cross-access part here. As was pointed out, if people are going to go to the movie theater, they're not going to get in their cars and go. It doesn't reduce the curb cuts on Hill Street. Frankly, it doesn't do anything, and as long as you put driveways there that would, that would be closed and only accessible to emergency vehicles, I don't see any reason to have a lot of people driving through. I'm sure that, I know the movie theater people well. They're going to be having events in their parking lot. They're not going to want a lot of cars whipping through there as well. So I would agree with the applicant that this is a decision that should be left to the planning board, and I would hope that the planning board would consider those arguments that I've just made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have provide pedestrian cross-access, though.
That makes sense.
Yes.
And I think that's, I think we're...
All right. Do we have any members of the public that would like to be heard on this application at this public hearing? Okay, well, then, I'm, yeah, I think I'm going to make a motion that we, we do keep this open.
For written decision? For written, uh, written, maybe?
Well, we're going to have to draft.
We want to keep the record open.
Yeah, so...
You could address the staff housing to the board.
Okay. Yeah, the, the staff housing, I'm not quite, I'm never the building inspector, and the building inspector is of the opinion that it's a permitted use.
It has no cooking facilities. It has no cooking facilities.
I'm sorry.
It has no cooking facilities.
The staff housing.
I thought the idea was we were reducing...
Yeah, no. They do not have cooking facilities or kitchens.
Correct. So I thought we were reducing the parking, or not requiring parking for the staff housing, under the idea that they're going to live and work right at the location. How are they going to live without a, any cooking facility? What's the plan? That's all.
No, there is no cooking.
But we could, we could add a general common cooking area for them. I think it's silly to add.
There's a restaurant there, and the, you know, coming from a, well, my, my boys have restaurants, and there's always what they call a staff meal. A staff meal will be available for them. The staff meal ain't as nice as what the menu is, but it's the staff meal. So they're, they, well, I'm not concerned about them not having cooking facilities and not having a place to eat. They'll either have the staff meal from the on-premise from the, from the restaurant across the street, or they'll have go like we all do. Go to one of the places where you can buy food and sit down and eat in the Village of Southampton.
I have another question.
I don't understand, that's pretty basic.
I have another question. Concerning the affordable housing units, do you already have a outline of what you mean by affordable housing, the, what the rents will be, the terms, and things of that nature?
Well, that's, we're going to have to abide by the restrictions that the, that the village requires.
It's been drafted. It was, it was in 2021.
Oh. Okay, I haven't seen that.
What about, what about the size of the staff housing? Do we feel that's sufficient?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Yes. They all have twin-exel beds. They have their own bathrooms. They have ample amount of space in there. You can make them ADA compliant if need be. We didn't want to start to add kitchens or kitchenettes into them, because then you could blur that line.
Then it becomes, we don't blur the line. Then it becomes something different.
Second means to be aggressive, natural light, windows?
Yes.
Right.
There's a common laundry facility right across the hall.
All right. Well, I think I would like to hold this open, this hearing open, and I also want more time to work on, you know, how we're going to write the decision of exactly what is going to be included in this.
If I may, there's nothing different than you doing any of that, asking for more information from the applicant, having a dialogue with the applicant, which is the way it goes.
Yeah.
But you're, I'm asking, what I'm asking you is to close the public hearing. There's been, there's no...
I've discussed this with some of the board members, and they, they would like to keep it open.
If I may, for what purpose? There's been no public comment. So anything that you ask of us, if you ask us to provide more information, or if you have questions, that happens in the typical land use process. This is a public hearing for the public to give comments.
Right.
Why would one keep it open? It doesn't prohibit you from asking the applicant to provide more information.
I think the...
I don't know. I feel that, I feel that it's, it's better to keep it open and not close it at this time, John. We've been waiting a long time for this, and I...
Not as long as the applicant.
Well, quite honestly, this is the first time that this new plan has been shown to the public. The public should have time, if they wish, to comment on this, just because they...
The public had the statutory time to come in and look at it. They were given notice, they were, it was a notice in the paper, there was a posted notice, it was anybody who was interested...
All right, John, I'm not going to argue with you. I'd, I'd like to make a motion that this be closed, but, actually, be kept open until the January 9th meeting. Do I have anyone?
Is the potential for having a resolution?
There is a potential for that. Yes, there is.
All right.
Oh, now you like it, John.
No, 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 no. I'm just going to ask you to close and put it down for determination on January 9th.
Yeah.
And you tell me that you're considering that as also a resolution.
Yes.
That's fine.
That is correct. That is correct. But I do want the ability for someone who may just see this for the first time to be able to come in and have that comment.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go on to the next public hearing. This is, it relates to a local law 33 of 2024, a local law amending chapter 78 nuisances of the Southampton Village Code by clarifying the previously adopted code intended to ban the use of gas leaf blowers within the village of Southampton. I'll make a motion to open this public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do we have any comments from up here or would I just, I'll just invite members of the public to come forward at this time and speak on the local law that's being proposed here this evening? Who would like to come first?
Someone explain what it is?
Purpose of the law is, right? So the back in, I don't know what year, because I wasn't here, but the village adopted a a code addressing the gas leaf blowers. They they wrote it so that it would phase in. There were some, there were some attorneys arguing that the law was confusing. And so to avoid any argument about that in the future, this was intended to be a complete ban as of October of 2024. I believe the code was written correctly to say that, but there was some arguments being made that it was somehow confusing. So to end any confusion, we're amending the law to ban leaf blowers outright, effective immediately in the village and only make it available during a public emergency as declared, if it's authorized as declared by the mayor. So following a storm or something.
And that was a suggestion of the planning commission.
That was, right.
And I think we have a letter to that effect.
We do.
So that was the, that's the purpose of proposing this amendment to the the code.
Please, sir, come forward.
Hi, my name is Bob Biasetti, 36 Jennings Avenue. Today, obviously, there's some confusion out there because I was told I was going to get a $500 fine today because while I was out doing some errands, Mahoney Landscaping came to the house and decided for the first time in many months to start using gas blowers. So obviously, everyone doesn't, isn't on the same page here about what's going on with that scenario.
I don't think there's any confusion if you're asking me, but maybe some people have tried to create confusion.
Okay. So I know a fine was, you know, I said I wouldn't accept the fine. I said, you know, luckily, Mahoney was given the fine by the ordinance people for using it. But the people who were in in charge from the landscaping company were refusing to give ID and refusing to accept the fine. And it became kind of a big deal with the, you know, the ordinance guys were doing what they were supposed to do. And when I got on with the project manager from Mahoney on the phone, he's, he told me point-blank, no, we don't, we're allowed to use gas blowers starting today, and it's, that's the law. And I told him I did not believe that was true. So this is just the beginning of, you know, things that are going to be happening, so.
Wait, whether, again, the point of this this revision to the code is to make it very clear.
Right.
What is the intent of the village?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not what happened this afternoon.
I understand, I understand. But we've had some issues, again, because of a confusion with the way the law was written and the way the court is interpreting it. And so that is why we must now act to revise the law to make it very clear, so there is no ambiguity, so that if it goes to court in the future, it is very clear how the judge should should rule.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, though, for very much for your comment.
Thank you, mayor and trustees. My name is Paige Louthen, and I live at 45 Hunting Street, Southampton Village. I was part of the task force in 2022 to address the issues of the gas-powered leaf blowers. We worked with homeowners and landscapers, including Don Mahoney, and we all agreed to the total ban on the gas blowers beginning October 2024. We initially wanted January, but we worked with the landscapers. They, we realized that they needed more time to get underway with the new electric equipment, and so we went to October 2024. The positive feedback regarding the ban from our village residents has been amazing. Everyone comments on how much quieter it is, and their quality of life has been vastly improved. Most landscapers have been compliant with the ban, and driving around the village, I can see it's just as cleaned up as it was at this time last year. I've even seen landscapers that have already switched to fully electric, including mowers and trimmers. They handle large estates, so the equipment works well. As we all know, gas-powered leaf blowers are incredibly destructive to the environment. Besides the deafening noise, they produce a huge amount of air pollution from the two-stroke motors. One hour of use is equivalent to driving a car across the country. The particulate matter that they spew into the air is horrible for our air quality, and all of this is especially harmful to the workers who must operate them. It is crucial that we keep this ban on gas blowers, and I support the proposed clarifying amendment to the code. I just want to have a shout out to our police department and our wonderful code enforcers, especially Angel Perez, who have done a great job on informing the landscapers of the ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Louthen. Sir?
I'm David Hart. I live at 35 Hildreth Street. It's actually heartbreaking to hear Bob Biasetti's talk that the landscapers are now pushing back against this ban, which has been obviously in place. It seems reasonable to me that landscaping companies would actually be stewards of the environment. It makes sense that people who make their living from plants and soil would be the most invested in sustainability. I can imagine a world in which these companies would be the primary educators and proponents of environmental practices. These practices would include reducing carbon pollution and dependence on fossil fuels and appreciation for the interdependence of living things. For example, fallen leaves provide nutrients for plant growth and a habitat for insects that that feed our backyard birds. Chemical insecticides are indiscriminate poisons for all insects, including insects that are vital to the ecosystem. Chemical fertilizers poison the groundwork, rudder, fuel algae bloom, and kill base gallops. Noise pollution disturbs the serenity of nature and causes anger and stress. Heat emissions from leaf blowers atomize harmful bacteria in the soil. Vibrations from leaf blowers cause auditory and musculoskeletal damage to workers. Oversized trucks and trailers gouge water-filled trenches into our lawns, providing ideal conditions for mosquito breeding. These vehicles also obstruct traffic on small village streets, making it dangerous for residents who may need access for emergency services. The proliferation of landscaping companies demonstrates that this is an extremely lucrative business. I strongly urge the professional landscaping community to take a larger view of the economy and the environment. Doing away with gas-powered leaf blowers is an obvious first small step. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I I think, if you don't mind, Orson Cummings was going to be next, and then we'll, then we'll have you.
Hello, Orson Cummings, 57 Walnut. Thank you very much for working to rewrite this law. I would just wanted to say that going back to the Michael Irving administration, I was involved in this issue, and we got together and did a lot of the same things that were said, meeting with landscapers and appreciating their concern for trying to make this change economically and culturally, and it was very difficult for them. So we kept agreeing for more time. And I think to bring this up now is rather disingenuous from the landscaping community because this has been agreed to, and we've overstretched our capacity to endure these machines locally. And I will say that I, too, have heard from more people than I could count how much nicer it has been to live here year-round with these machines not being used. They are a burden on everyone. The the sound travels through windows, doors. You can't close, you can't close them out. Anyway, so it's been a real pleasure and a treat to remind us why we live here. And then I thought that was a great presentation. I do believe culturally, landscapers overall should work to understand that this, the way we approach destruction of the environment versus preserving it and and making this place what it is when we really love to be here, keep it that way. So anyway, thank you very much. I can't wait to have this finally done, I hope, again.
Thank you, Orson.
Cheers.
Now, now, Kimberly Allen. I know, I know, we'll get to.
Hi, Kimberly Allen, 39 Potato Field Lane. I actually was a trustee in Michael Irving's administration, and I was there, so I know exactly what happened. And what Orson said is 100% correct. We worked with all of the landscapers, and we made it very clear that we were going to have a summer restriction, period, end of story. I have the original code here, and that's what it said. There was no ambiguity. And then we said we would work to ultimately enact that legislation. We were the first village to enact this legislation to ban, to create a restriction, and ultimately, you did a very good job of banning it. But there should be no ambiguity. I don't know what happened in 2022 when it was rewritten, but my understanding from Linda Riley's group is that they, you know, there were conflicts in the code. But I I think it's a badge of distinction for this village to not have gas-powered leaf blowers. People really like it. They like being able to wake up in the morning and not hear noise. It is a really loud day today. I was on my bike working out. And I come around the corner and I hear this enormous noise, like a helicopter over my head. And it was three gas leaf blowers in in Cobblefield. It is so loud, so disturbing, you know. I think it's clear. It's bad for the environment. It's bad for people's health. We have a teeny tiny aquifer. I mean, you know, I'm not going to beat this to death. But thanks to Orson and others like Patricia Ross and many other people in the community, and, you know, we turned the corner. So let's keep it that way.
Thank you, Kimberly. Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Please, sir. Susan, did you want to speak? Okay. You just can't help yourself, Susan, can you?
No, you. I agree with everything everyone else said. I honestly feel that the people who live here have a right to peace and quiet, and that people who come from outside should not be telling us how to live. I I walk early in the morning. It's, it's, the noise of those things travels miles and the health benefits and all of that, but I feel we have a right to a quiet village. It's true. It's so much better. And I'm not confused about what the law was. And I just think, put an end to this. Let's just move ahead and ban them completely without any way that someone could be confused. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir?
I hope I'm permitted, as a non-village resident, to speak up. My name is Dieter von Leesten. I'm chair of the Southampton Town Sustainability Committee. You guys here in the village are one step ahead of us, and we're following you for we have only the partial seasonal ban. And I very much appreciate if the clarification of the code comes in so that we can follow suit. For we are, we really want the same all-year-round ban. For the landscapers, which are employed in the village, are the same which are doing Southampton Town areas. So they have all the equipment, and they have no more problems. And the old objections seven years ago when we started on this in Southampton Town was electric equipment can't do the job no more. The new electric equipment has been around and does the same job like the gas equipment. But while we add this, maybe there should be a consideration to look at other gas-driven equipment, like hedge cutters and others. So why not ban that too? So those are my comments. I appreciate listening to me.
Thank you very much, Dieter. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Bill.
Rob?
Rob Coburn, 345 Hill Street. I have a comment. It's really a question because you hear a lot of, I think everyone who's here tonight is saying, keep it. I think a lot of people came out of a concern that there was a substantive change or or people pushing back substantively on this. I just, the question may be for Eileen. This is really, has to do, I think, with how the wording of the original statute was constructed, where certain information showed up, and some people weren't able to read it to clearly see that as of October 1st, they are banned other than during a declaration of emergency. Is that correct?
That's right.
So there's been no pushback or or thought on this board to change substantively anything about the law. This is really just a technical administrative change. I just wanted to clarify. Is that?
That's great.
Basically.
So we're all, I think, heading where we want to head, and and I'll just add my two cents, which is that I've, you know, with the notable exceptions of when you do hear them, the difference has been remarkable. It's been a great improvement for quality of life for people who live here and are in the village during the day.
Thank you, Rob. Any other members? Sir, come forward, please.
Good evening, mayor, mayor and trustees. My name is Christopher, Chris Brenner, senior, from 214 White Street, Southampton. I'm here tonight to speak against the leaf blower ban. I'm, I understand I'm in the minority of residents here in the village, as I do my own landscaping. Most residents hire companies. I work rotating shifts and can't use daylight to my favor during the daylight savings time. I work hard to make my property well-maintained as the village requires us homeowners to do so. I've replaced hip and have knee issues, and using a gas-powered leaf blower would make my property maintenance much easier. I understand restrictions are needed, but I ask you to come up with some strict guidelines as to when we could use them. I am an ex-chief of the Southampton Fire Department, still a current member for 31 years, and also a member of the Southampton Village Amulets Corps. Please help us come up with a plan that we could work for everyone. Also, enjoy your holidays, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chris. Was there someone else who wanted to speak? I'm sorry. Yes, Mackey.
Mackey Finnerty, Woolley Street, Southampton. I'm really confused about why anyone is confused. If you all might recognize this little thing that you sent to everybody this spring, is my understanding, and there were stacks in the foyer that anybody could have, and people were encouraged to tell their neighbors, their landscapers, and so on. It's in English and Spanish, very few words, very clear. First paragraph, gas-blowered leaf blowers may only be used from March 15th, 2024 to May 15th, 2024, for spring cleanup. Then it gives the hours. Then, last paragraph, this whole thing is very short, effective May 16th, 2024, the operation of gas-powered leaf blowers is prohibited in the village of Southampton due to noise, public health, and safety concerns. Now you tell me what's confusing about that, in English and in Spanish. I think it's something anyone can understand. And I find it upsetting that now, once again, as some of you might know, but through three or four mayors, I've been working on this issue along with some of the other people in this room, a long, long time. And each time it's in tweaking and tweaking and tweaking, even making the same arguments. So we don't need to do that anymore, and I want it to be clear because we don't want a judge to say, oh, that's not clear. So I'm really glad that you're going to make it clear since some people don't. But the landscape companies have been at these meetings. I've been there with them year after year after year. They understood all this. They understood the writing. They made their arguments. We made our arguments. Things were changed over the years. It is not confusing. So please, you all know how to write it, so people who are confused will no longer be confused. And I thank you for doing that, and thank you all for taking the time to to immediately correct this problem as it arose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackey. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Otherwise, I was going to call upon the clerk to to summarize the mail correspondence we've received on this issue.
Do we have anyone else?
There is Zooms, Bill.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sage, did there anyone on Zoom waiting to speak? No, thank you. Okay.
So regarding public hearing number two, we did receive correspondence from, to the board from the several residents. Diane Englander, Mark Underberg, Jan Kumar, Ariadne Calvo Platero, Anne McGilvain, pardon?
Mcilvain.
Mcilvain, thank you. Anne Mcilvain, Kathy Dean, Margot Horn, Victoria Khan, Randy Stern, Deborah Bates, C. Alexander Moskwa, junior, Diane Smith, and Lali Weymouth. Those are the folks that we received correspondence from the board, and that's on the agenda and on the website.
Okay. Thank you. Any members of the board wish to add anything at this time? Okay, then I will ask that this public hearing be closed. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I know, no, no, no abstaining, no problem there. All right. Thank you very much for that. Now we'll move on to local law number 34 of 2024. This is a local law amending chapter A 122 concerning outdoor sidewalk dining rules and regulations of the Southampton Village Code by increasing the permit application fee and extending the license period. So just to give a little background to this, there were several restaurants that wanted to be able to continue their outdoor dining past November 30th, which was the old date when it had to cease. They, actually, it might have been November 1st. Do you remember? I think it was November 1st. It was November 1st. I apologize. It was November 1st. So they asked that it be go through the end of the year because there were still many people in the village, especially at Thanksgiving and and the holiday season, when it might be warm, when they would like to be able to dine outside. So this legislation is changing our code to allow it to be open until the end of the calendar year. And in fact, the only months that it would not be allowed would be January, February, and March, I believe. So there were only three months out of the year instead of what used to be a shorter period of time. And it is also saying that if umbrellas are used at these facilities, they cannot advertise products or drinks or whatever the case may be, that they should really only be advertising the the restaurant or the establishment for which they are in front of, or again, just a colorful umbrella without any wording or logos. And so that is what this is, this is doing. So it is allowing outdoor dining for a longer period. The restaurants did send me a letter requesting this, and it seemed reasonable, especially when it was actually a lot warmer. when it was actually a lot warmer back at the beginning of November. And I understood why they would like to be able to keep people outside. So with that being said, this is an explanation. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and be heard on this topic?
Sure, why not?
Before you speak, you can come up, but before you speak, I just wanted to make it clear that we did make a few minor changes to the proposed changes to the code since it was published in the paper. And that was really just about taking the umbrellas in the same way you would take the tables and chairs in.
Right.
As required and also securing the umbrellas, et cetera. So it's a minor change.
Yeah, we don't want umbrellas blowing down Main Street.
Yeah. Otherwise, it's the law that was published.
Sounds wise. Ben Cummings, 57 Walnut Street. I'm in favor. I think outdoor dining is great and restaurants all could use a longer season, more tables, more revenue, and it's better for the servers and everybody who works for the restaurants, and they employ a lot of people. I would ask why ban it for January, February, and March when, given climate change, a 65-degree day in March is hardly unheard of anymore, and it might be nice to sit outside.
Well, there were concerns about snow removal, that if it were to be added to pollution, and we have sometimes gotten heavy snowfalls in March, that the village Department of Public Works wants to be able to, to, again, plow the sidewalks and the streets and not have any interference from tables and chairs that might be out. You know, and if there were to be a snowstorm in December, the village would also like to reserve the right to say, look, please take this in while we clean up the village. But, but we thought that this was, again, extending it for a lot longer, especially at the busy time of the year when a lot of people are here and still wishing to dine outside. I'm not sure how many people would be dining outside tonight or last night, but, but anyway, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments.
I think there's more appetite for it, pun intended.
Yeah.
And if the system works in December, for if we all know in this day and age that a storm is coming and things can be taken away, then perhaps it could be considered to extend it all year long.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Any other comments? Sage, do you have anyone online? Any, any comments from the board? Okay, well, then at this time, I would ask that we close the public hearing for local law number 34 of 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to go to Kathy, the clerk, to see if there was any more correspondence to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That it would not include these, these first public hearings.
That's correct. So we also received correspondence from David Rong, and we received correspondence from Carol Zacharias, right? And Carol Zacharias. And other than that, everything else was regarding the leaf blower ban. Those are the only two.
And I think Carol Zacharias spoke about traffic.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
And then David Rong had comments about the Ethics Board.
Okay.
And that is all.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
So at this time, we'll open up for the public comment for three minutes on any topics that they wish to be heard on. Please come forward.
Hi, Deb Leon, 134 Somerset. Just a correction, Carol's letter was regarding safety, not traffic, a very important distinction.
Well, thank you.
So good evening, everybody. As many of you are aware, Somerset Avenue has long been a safety concern with conditions worsening over time. Most recently, our community experienced a horrific traffic accident in which a pedestrian walking a dog was struck by a car cutting through Somerset. This horrific incident highlights the urgent need for action. Tonight, I feel it is essential to read into the record an email that was sent to the trustees this past Sunday evening, the Carol email, from 26 residents on Somerset, Pleasant, and the surrounding neighborhood that addresses this critical issue. So I'm going to try to read this very quickly in the interest of time. So it's addressed to the mayor and the village clerk and all the trustees. On behalf of the undersigned, including residents who attended Friday's meeting, we request that the trustees post a resolution for this upcoming Thursday's Board of Trustees meeting to notice a public hearing to be held at the January 9th, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting. The public hearing would address a proposed amendment to village law to make Somerset Avenue a one-way street from the northmost intersection with Pleasant Lane to McGee moving north. There would be no access to Somerset Avenue from McGee. This proposal aligns with Chief Hurtal's recommendation from this past Friday. The amendment to the law should be included with the agenda. Hopefully, our attorney, Eileen Powers, can prepare the amendments this week so that it is included simultaneously with the resolution to notice the public hearing. This also gives the trustees ample time to consult with a traffic engineer, if so inclined, prior to public hearing on January 9th. This matter is extremely urgent due to the unsafe conditions on our street over the past several years culminating in this horrific traffic accident that occurred on Somerset Avenue this past Tuesday at approximately 5:15 PM. Your immediate attention to this matter would be greatly appreciated. And so as, as mentioned, the email reflects that there are 26, and we did this in a short period of time, we're very confident that there's a lot more than 26 residents who are deeply troubled by these ongoing dangers on Somerset Avenue. This is an urgent and active safety issue that must be actioned as soon as possible. We really are looking to you to please help us. We're frightened. Thank you for your time and your consideration and immediate action to this critical matter.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else? Peter? Oh, he's just getting up. Okay. I thought you wanted to say something, Peter.
Any mail you can send? If not, I'll.
Okay.
David Rong, 85 Pleasant Avenue. Somerset is a unique situation that needs a unique solution, and the chief provided one in consideration of this one-way on the north segment of Somerset. And this will significantly improve safety in the neighborhood. However, I believe it can be improved upon. The best solution would be to make Somerset no-through traffic, also known as local access only. And the reason that that would be slightly different is that right now, this one-way concept will not allow residents of the neighborhood and all our providers to, when we're coming back from the village, to access our own neighborhood. We will have to go up onto Hill Street and add to the traffic burden on Hill Street, which is exactly what you don't want. Okay? So, but if you would just make the entire neighborhood no-through traffic, then we could, we could access it, but others could not. Also, I know the concept of not allowing traffic to come from the north, but appreciate of the, of the six accidents, and I appreciate the one a week ago Tuesday, which involved, you know, severe injury was the worst, but we've had six with vehicles up on lawns. But two of those six were actually people driving north, not driving south. So no-through access entirely would prevent that problem also. I think there was also a near miss. It also was somebody driving north. Now, I know one of the concerns of our neighborhood is enforcement, and we all recognize that's a very difficult issue. But solely having one way doesn't alleviate the enforcement issue. As we noted when we did the cone experiment, coming off Lee and Captain's Neck, people were, you know, they were, we thought, oh, they're all being forced to go right. Some people were just driving over left through and hoping there was no traffic, and then turned and left. So just having one way in and of itself is not going to prevent people from doing it. Now, I have thoughts on enforcement, which is to involve a neighborhood watch group. We could provide stamped and dated videos of violations and turn that over to the police department. I appreciate that's a whole effort that would need some, but it really is a consideration. I think individuals in individual residential areas could really assist in this enforcement. Okay? So those are thoughts on what, you know, I think we could do. But it's a, it's a dire situation. I, you know, saw the letter in the paper today from a resident up on Bishop's saying, oh, you know, all these, it was really blaming the victim, you know, saying that person should have been wearing brighter clothing and wow. So you are going to, to make this happen, you're going to have to be strong. You're going to have to be able to tell the people on Bishop's Pond and others from the ABC Streets, you know, this, we're only asking for something for Somerset, you know, because Somerset is unique and we have the accidents to prove it. So that's, that's my only thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Sorry, Christine, please come forward.
Sorry. Christine, wake up. I just, you know, driving around, I have sort of, I know it's 25 miles per hour, the speed limit here, unless otherwise posted is my understanding. But I don't think anybody coming here knows that. And I'm not in favor of more signs, but I think in some of these critical places, that people don't have a clue, you know, they just, they do U-turns, they do, they do all these things on, you know, off Main Street, coming off Main Street, they're going 40, 50 miles an hour, Cameron Street is an example. But even when I'm driving around, you know, we walk on little planes, and I mean, people are just going so fast, any road that's straight even, you know, that, that there's nothing that, I don't know what you could have that isn't too obtrusive, but like something that said, speed limit, you know, 25 miles per hour, you know, unless otherwise posted, you know, how you could somehow make that get out there, because I don't think people know. Or maybe they just don't care. Anyway.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? We have someone on Zoom. Sage, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Manger. It's Spiros Zacharias from 160 Somerset Avenue. I think you'd all agree that we shouldn't have to belabor the point that was made in spades last year at numerous Board of Trustees meetings and in other venues. But on Tuesday, as has been already discussed, at approximately 5:15 PM, a longtime village resident who lives across the street from Roy was struck and nearly killed by a cut-thru vehicle on Somerset Avenue. In fact, many residents from neighboring streets come to Somerset and Pleasant to walk the loop. Our neighbor, a longtime resident, spent a week in ICU and endured many hours of surgery. I'm going to take these three minutes to remind the board how we got here. In early 2023, the board had the courage and the good sense to close Somerset Avenue at McGee while the Somerset Avenue and Pleasant Lane safety issue was urgently studied. Board members walked the street and hired traffic safety engineers to assist in solutioning. The board understood both the gravity and the urgency of the issue. The board knew it was an urgent safety issue, not a traffic issue. The issue was studied, and the current remedy of no right turns on the Hill Street was established. Lines were painted and the road was reopened. We warned the board that unless the no-right-turn law was strictly enforced, we'd have a tragedy. That's in the record. The law wasn't sufficiently enforced, as the resources required to do so exceeded the department's capacity. And now we have our first near fatality of a pillar of the community who's married to another pillar of the community, whose blood was splattered on the Somerset Avenue by a cut-thru vehicle. The victim has a beautiful daughter who had to spend a week in ICU with her mom away from school. In addition, three separate cars have ended up on three separate front lots since Somerset Avenue was reopened last year. It's about the sightlines. They can't be fixed. Somerset Avenue is the Lombard Street of Southampton Village. You've had years to study the issue, and now you have a burning platform. You have a civic and moral obligation to fully remedy the situation now that other remedies have failed. When dozens of reasonable people tell you that there's a serious problem, you should believe them. You needed to act more assertively at that time, and you need to do so now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Spiros. Sage, is there anyone else on Zoom? Anyone?
Yes, I'd like to take the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Oh, you do? All right, let's go to the Zoom person.
Well, let me extend the courtesy to the guest. Thank you.
They declined? Okay. Thank you, though, Sage. Anyone else? Otherwise, we'll turn to trustee Brown.
Good evening and thank you. Southampton Village, I want to reference to an article published by 27 East dated December 6, 2024, regarding a discussion by the Southampton Village Ethics Board. In its decision, the Ethics Board erroneously determined that I violated the Village Code of Ethics by attending two fundraisers. By way of background, I attended a Metropolitan Opera event in which a friend of mine was an honoree for her 90th birthday. I also recently attended a fundraiser hosted by Beconic Baykeepers. There is nothing about attending either event which in and of self violates the Ethics Code. Yet, I found myself subject to an investigation by the Village Ethics Board based upon a complaint from a disgruntled resident apparently acting in concert with a former elected official and political arrival. The fact that an investigation was even open when the complaint was made by a source with no credibility is questionable. Aside from all too familiar and outrageous disappointing implications of the investigation, on its face, the board's decision is without factual basis. It is as if the board themselves have not read the code or even understand operating under the code. After the alleged exhaustive research and investigation, the Board of Ethics had zero evidence that I violated any provisions of the code. However, instead of acknowledging the fact that they chose to simply make up violations to attempt to tarnish my reputation, specifically with respect to my attendance at a Beconic Baykeepers event, the board does not cite any code provision that was violated. Instead, the Ethics Board says that I attended an event after they issued an advisory opinion stating that trustees' attendance at fundraising events exactly like this without purchasing a ticket is a code violation. That is simply not true and begs the question of whether the Ethics Board even read the decision it issued, never mind understanding it. The event that I addressed to the, the event that I addressed in the advisory opinion was nothing like the events I attended, but rather was one where the not-for-profit host who offered the free tickets to board members has a lease with the village, not the same as my attendance. The concern with the complimentary ticket to that event is that it could be viewed as an attempt to curry favor with that, the landlord, the board members. The Ethics Board stated attendance at this event without purchasing a ticket would violate the code. In my case, the Beconic Baykeeper has no business, no business before or with the village. There is absolutely nothing in the code that bars them from inviting me to be their guest. This is especially so given by my longstanding work and interest in water quality projects. The event, which included speakers, was an educational opportunity for me and very clearly not a code violation. The same is true of the 90th birthday celebration onstage at the mat, which I attended by personal invitation. A friend has no dealings with the village, was the honoree, and she was permitted to invite guests. The board decisions finds that I violated section 7-17C, the code which would mean that my attendance at the event was additional compensation for having engaged in official conduct I was required to perform. They relied upon a section of the code having absolutely nothing to do with attending an event as a guest. While shamefully, it is clear that the Board of Ethics, whether wittingly or unwittingly, allowed itself to be used by those attempting to discredit me for their own personal and political advantage, those individuals made an attempt to even hide, didn't make any attempt to hide their motivation. Immediately upon receipt of the board's determination, David Rung and Stephen Ring set about to publicize the decision and cast doubt upon my political reputation. It is yet another weak effort to lay the longstanding groundwork for a path forward to seek public office out of the ashes of what was now the ruined political career of their friend, the former mayor, Jesse Warren. Mr. Warren has a vendetta against village board members like me, who stood up to him in an attempt to run ruffian over everyone around him, including female employees, now suing him for sexual harassment and creating a hostile work, workplace. Their weekly triads in the media are full of half-truths and outright lies. The worst thing about this entire situation is their impetuous to associate the term unethical with my name, coming from a deeply flawed decision by the Ethics Board when I've spent my entire life, both public and private, holding myself and others to the highest ethical standards. I will not stand by and allow this reprehensible behavior to persist. It is ludicrous to be referred to as unethical, especially by the likes of Jesse Warren and David Rung, who do not know the first thing about ethical behavior. My reputation for ethical behavior will not be silly by a political-driven erroneous determination. I want to thank the many people of Southampton Village sending their letters and their notes of support and understanding and viewing the code and seeing the evidence that the code proved itself. I invite you to take the code for yourself and the statement, and I again thank so many for their support, and I will continue to stand for what is right. Thank you, Southampton Village.
Thank you, Robin. If there are no other public comments, we'll move on from a public comment to suggested resolutions. Suggested resolution number one, Len Zanotti?
Resolution number one. The claims for the warrant dated December 12, 2024 totaling $3,586,282.35, warrant number A16 General Fund. $412,463.39 warrant number H7 Capital Fund and $100 warrant number T13 CS Trust Fund are awarded and approved. Before I suggest the motion, I would like to explain that the large, extraordinarily large amount this, at this meeting for, for the general fund warrant is due to our annual contribution as the employer to the New York State Employees Retirement System and the New York State Police and Fire Retirement System, which is about almost $3 million of the $3.5 million in the warrant. I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Number two, resolve the reading of the minutes for the November 2024 Board of Trustees. Meetings are dispensed, accepted, as filed by the village clerk, and the actions taken at those meetings are hereby ratified and approved. I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton is considering a local law amending Chapter 78 nuisances of the Southampton Village Code by clarifying the previously adopted code intended to ban the use of gas leaf blowers within the Village of Southampton. And whereas, a public hearing was held by the village board on December 12, 2024, at which time all persons either for or against said amendment were heard, now therefore be it resolved that local law number 33 of 2024 is hereby adopted. I make a motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton is considering a local law amending Chapter A122 Outdoor Sidewalk Dining Rules and Regulations of the Southampton Village Code by increasing the permit application fee and extending the license period. And whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton has further reviewed the action and has determined that this proposed local law is considered a Type II action under six, New York CRR Part 617.5 provisions of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, CEQA, and that no further review under New York Environmental Conservation Law Article 8 is necessary. And whereas, the public hearing was held by the village board on December 12, 2024, at which time all persons either for or against the said amendment were heard, now therefore be it resolved that local law number 34 of 2024 is hereby adopted. I will make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Resolution five. Whereas, the Board of Trustees accepts the donation from Herbert Anthony Allen II in the amount of $5,000, which was generously given to the Southampton Village Police Department, now therefore be it resolved, the 2024-2025 budget is amended to reflect this donation as follows. Increase budget line A, period 2703, gifts and donations in the amount of 5,000, and increase budget line A, period 3120.2, police equipment in the amount of $5,000. With thanks from the board, I make this, this motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't spend it all in one place.
Whereas, the Village Board of Trustees hereby accepts the donation from Piazza Court Cultural Group, LLC, in the amount of $500 to purchase a 2025 Arbor Tree Day Tree. Now therefore be it resolved, the 2024-2025 budget is amended to reflect this donation as follows. Increase budget line A.2703, gifts and donation in the amount of $500, and increase budget line A.8560.2, shade trees in the amount of $500. Do I have a motion?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Eileen, maybe you could take.
Whereas, the village's workforce includes individuals who are not represented by any labor union and are not classified as department heads. And whereas, the village maintains a policy regarding terms and conditions of employment for nonrepresented employees. And whereas, the village wishes to clarify its existing policy for nonrepresented employees with respect to the accumulation and payment of vacation time, sick time, and compensatory time. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the annexed employment policy for nonrepresented employees. This supersedes all previous board-approved versions of said policy for nonrepresented employees excluding the department heads. Before we make that motion, this policy change is intended to help the village budget more effectively by addressing the accumulation of sick time, compensatory time, and vacation time over lengthy terms of employment. This code will require employees to reduce their time on the books to the, to a limited number, and that gives them a period of time to do that. We allow them to do it over a period of years out of fairness to those longtime village employees that it affects. So that's your motion.
And it'll allow them to buy, buy the time out over.
Correct. They can either buy the time out or use some of the time over a period of time.
Several years, depending on how much time they've accumulated.
Right. With the idea that at the, if they were to suddenly retire or leave the village's employment, we wouldn't be responsible for paying these big payouts that are currently possible.
How is this change different from what existed before?
So I, I wasn't here, but I believe that the board adopted a similar policy a couple of years ago and limited the number of days that you could carry over, the amount of compensatory time you could earn, and the amount of vacation time you could carry over. But there was no mechanism in the code for those employees that earned that time over the last 20 years or so. There's, there's not that many employees that are nonrepresented that this covers, but for those employees, it allows them, this builds in a way for them to, they don't want to buy it all out in one year because of the tax implications to them and maybe to us also, the, the cost to us in a, in a single year. Same thing if they wanted to start using it, they wouldn't be able to use it and be an effective employee all in one year. So this allows them to, to face it, to spread it out over time.
So those with the most time, Ed, get five years to be able to use it or buy it out, and those with less than that get three years to buy it out or, or try and use it. So that we don't have people with a large, you know, 200 days left when they retire, and then the village is all of a sudden, you know, given a bill for, for all of this time that we would have to pay out and that we don't actually budget for, because it's unknown when someone will retire and what the village is going to specifically owe on that individual.
It also more directly relates to the budget insofar as if you accumulated time 20 years ago and you leave now, you're cashed out at today's rate when you earned the time a long time ago. So it's, it's more equitable in that sense.
So that's the intention, but that's your motion.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Number eight.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the letter of resignation of Cameron as Deputy Village Clerk, Southampton Village Clerk, effective December 6, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Resolution nine, resolved. The Board of Trustees accepts the letter of resignation for Daniel Sanchez, seasonal police officer, Southampton Village Police Department, effective December 3, 2024. With thanks for his service, so moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe he's going to the county, is that correct, chief? County of Suffolk. All right. At this time, we'll go to comments from the board members, and we will start with Trustee Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reflect back as we have our pledge allegiance, and I think of one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, the freedom, and justice for all. That must be not just in the court of law, but for those we regard that would upstand true ethical observation and education. That justice will prevail. This is the United States of America, and I am firm believer in justice prevailing for all. Once again, Southampton Village, I thank you for your support. It has been overwhelming, and I thank you that I will continue to serve you to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. We'll go to Trustee Simeoni.
As we near the holiday season, I feel the need to express my sense of gratitude. Gratitude for those who chose to elect me to my position in office so that I can try to make a difference, and gratitude toward my fellow board members who are also dedicating their time and efforts to make this a better village. And how about gratitude for the men and women who work for village government and keep the village running? Then, then, let's not forget to be grateful for the organizations that assist the needy and the persons that make generous contributions to those organizations. Case in point, the polar bear plunge, where the funds raised will feed thousands of families. And grateful for our loved ones. There's really so much to be grateful for, so let's not forget to express our gratitude for those acts of kindness received during this holiday season, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Trustee Simeoni. We'll go to Trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our last meeting of the year, and I, one of the things that I've learned as being a trustee is that how, that this is a very difficult job, because no matter what decision you come to, there are always some people who don't agree with you. Just this, this evening, we saw a situation where the large majority of the people, and myself included, believe that banning gas leaf blowers is in the best interest of the community, but we have a valued member of the community in the rear of the room who thinks not. Unfortunately for him, I think that we really need to do that, and I understand he's probably not going to be happy about that decision going forward, but I think of the overall benefit to the community is so overwhelming that I have to say I'm sorry, but we have to do this. I was shocked last week to get a call from the police chief that there'd been a very serious accident on Somerset, and even more shocked when I heard that the victim was my next-door neighbor. I just, my, my heart went out to her and her family, especially considering my knowledge of the situation and what we've been through in terms of trying to figure out how to deal with the safety and traffic issue, not only just on Somerset, but on all of our side streets because of the tremendous issue of, of too much traffic and people not obeying the traffic rules. We need to do something about Somerset. As the gentleman who, who called in on Zoom said, "We've got to do something." And Mr. Rung made some suggestions for how best to do it, and then the police chief has come up with an idea of a one-way road. And of course, anybody, I even think, I said to my wife this evening, even if they make a one-way road, there's going to be some bozo who goes down the one-way road the wrong way, trying to cut through and, and save time. They're just, I guarantee you, there'll be people to do that. And Mr. Rung's idea of the no-local access, great idea, but we have to make sure that , that people don't do it. And even if we are successful in doing that, I guarantee you, the people on Bishop's and Corrigan are going to say, "Hey, now all of a sudden, we've got more traffic. What about us?" And that's what makes this job so hard. I enjoy doing it, and I try to do the best I can to figure out the best solution for the vast majority of people. Sometimes it's not easy to see that, and sometimes when the people get irritated with you, they vent their displeasure, such as Trustee Brown is, is experiencing. And I've seen the Ethics Committee's decision, and we've heard from our village attorney that it's unclear what the linkage is between what Trustee Brown's attendance at these events were and what possible benefit or connection there is between the people who are providing these, the tickets to go to the event and, and any village business whatsoever. And that is why we, personally as this board, requested the Assets Committee, give us some information about why you're putting these two pieces together, Miss Trustee Brown's attendance at these events, and anything to do with village business at all that might be untoward. And unfortunately, they've not provided that information. So until they do that, I have to trust my, my dealings with Trustee Brown over the years to know that she is a very ethical person, and there's nothing ever she would do that might put her in a, in a poor light in terms of owing anything to anybody to do something for the village. So it's, it is a rewarding job, a great job. I enjoy doing this job for the village, and it's just, these are just some of the things we deal with on an ongoing basis. But as the year comes to an end, we, we are thankful for everything. I wish all the people in the village of all face a very, very happy holiday. And with that, I quote the great Santa Claus, say Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night.
Thank you, Trustee Stevenson. Trustee Zanotti?
Thank you, Mayor. As the liaison to the Tree Committee and to the Village Budget and Finance Committee, we've had some active meetings lately. With respect to the Tree Committee, there is a code enforcement issue in that the village collects leaves that the homeowners themselves leave on their curbs. Landscapers are required to cart leaves away. The town dump fees have almost doubled since last year, and our code enforcement and our village police department are renewing efforts to enforce landscapers from shirking this code requirement and are also looking for those landscapers who may be dumping leaves from their customers outside of the village onto village streets. This is a cost issue and certainly a quality of life issue. The Budget and Finance Committee has reviewed and discussed the Government Accounting Standard Board's pronouncement with respect to village fund balance policy, and we are working to come into compliance perhaps next month. Also, there will be an audit of our LoSAP program, which provides retirement credit to our volunteer ambulance and firefighters for their service to the village. It is standard procedure, and the village has never done it, and we, we are attempting to look into that. As was stated several times tonight, Chief Hurtow presented a proposal to residents on Friday, December 6, to change the traffic pattern on Somerset Avenue. We are reviewing her proposal. We are consulting with traffic professionals, as we said we would, and we will try to resolve that local issue as soon as we can. Lastly, based on the passage of the referendum on Election Day allowing work to commence in Dozier Park, we have started meeting with the company to construct the permeable reactive barrier to treat soil and groundwater to help prevent nitrogen from leaching into Lake Agaw. to treat soil and groundwater to help prevent nitrogen from leaching into Lake Agawam. And on that note, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year. Good night.
Thank you very much, Trustee Zanotti. So I just want to add that, again, November 30, we had the Parade of Lights. When I, we had several fire departments who decorated their fire trucks and vehicles to process through the village, and we had a record turnout. According to the police, we had 4,000 people in the village watching that event. And then the tree lighting, as well as the fireworks display. And all of this is done with money raised by a local institution that Mark Parrish and Andrew Polaro head up after, many years after the Yonnis had taken it, and before that, you know, back to Nancy and Jack Rist. So it's a great tradition in the village. I believe Millie Fellingham was involved with beginning the Parade of Lights to highlight the fire department. And it really was great to see so many people out there. It was a cold night, but everybody really, really enjoyed it. I want to mention that on December 4, I went on for my second time on WLNG with Chris Fiori, the mayor of North Haven. He has a little back and forth for about a half an hour, which I enjoyed very much, and he's a great guy. I've gotten to know him a little bit. And on December 8, I was invited to speak at the East End Hospice Tree of Lights Memorial Service that was held at the Rogers Memorial Library. That was a very moving ceremony. They mentioned the names of those that had passed in the last year, including my father, and it was very nice to be able to participate in that event. I am meeting next week with Ed Romayne, the county executive, Jerry Larson, the mayor of East Hampton Village, as well as Charlie McArdle, the town highway superintendent. And I are going to go to Hop Dog to meet with Ed Romayne in his office to talk about County Road 39 and what can be done to alleviate the traffic there, possibly a new road along the route of the high-power, high-tension wires that PSENG enjoys today. And so we're going to talk to him. Obviously, we're all very concerned with what is causing traffic, increased traffic in our village. And if we can keep the traffic up on County Road 39 or other roads north of the village, that would go a long way to helping us. So I said I was going to meet with the county executive. The mayor of East Hampton, as I said, wants to go along with me, as well as Charlie McArdle. We're going to talk about the light at McGee and County Road 39 to see if we can get some change that is there as well. But we've decided the only way we can do it is that the three of us are going to take a ride up to Hop Dog. What's going on in Village Hall also, just to bring people up to speed, is we've been installing some new windows here on the first floor that were a long time coming, but we got them. They're being installed by our wonderful DPW staff. They're almost all in, a little more trim work to do. And then next week, I'm also going to be meeting with an architect who had started some work, preliminary work, on how we could actually utilize the third floor of this building, which right now is in a gutted state and has been in a gutted state ever since the police station moved out and moved to their nice new office. It's not new anymore. It's 25 years old, I think. Moved over to Windmill Lane, but we've had a gutted third floor for over 20 years now. And it would be nice if we could fix that up and use that space for additional offices, as well as a community room. And so I'm going to meet with that architect next week to see what options we have there, as well as putting in a fire staircase at the rear of the building to replace the rather rickety fire escape that we have hanging off the side of the building. So there's a lot of work to be done, especially with infrastructure. We're trying to get as much done as possible, including paving and drainage. But we are slowly catching up, and I want to thank the Department of Public Works for all of their dedication to keeping our village as in good shape as it really is. And with that, again, I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Our next meeting will be on January 9, and I look forward to coming back in 2025 to address more of the village issues. So thank you all very much. Have a great holiday.
Happy holidays.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.